I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Susie, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salsedo.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here.
Motion for tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salsedo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Motion carries public comment.
Good evening, Greg Canfield, 403 North Washington. I quote Dire Straits again, here I am again in this mean old town talking about sewer. Got some notes here so I can stay on track. Pushback on this situation is sad and uncalled for. Since when do customers have to go to this length in trouble to get services that they paid for? This is not about whether you like Greg Canfield or not. This isn't just Greg Canfield, it's four parcels, eight customers that have a serious problem with the sewer that's the city's responsibility. This started when Dan stated there was no record of servicing this line. Dan, where did you look for records on that?
Looked at the files.
Okay. And how far back did you go?
I looked at the files, I didn't know what to do.
Okay, and that's where all the records are kept?
I know them.
Okay. Um, I asked on March 15th by email, be on the agenda for March 21st, and was told by the mayor on the 18th that packets had already gone out. Is it not something that we add to the agenda or amend the agenda on a regular basis?
Items that haven't. We had already taken action on that item, and that's what we discussed when we talked to.
That was the first time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so you hadn't taken action on it yet.
We had taken action, we'd already discussed it.
No, that was the next meeting, that was the next meeting, but, so, um, and then, Mike Burns, I texted you on March 28th, and just to make sure I get it right, my text was, "Good morning, Mike, could we put on the agenda for the next council meeting to discuss the sewer situation at 96 to 108 West Main, please, thank you." And your response, Mike, was, "I have no new information to give the council, and they have taken action on the matter, so I will not put something on the agenda that is not proper for me to do." Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. Yet, based on my FOIA request, there was new information from city files, and you went and talked to Dave Pasquale about it.
This isn't question and answer for you, Dave. I'm not going to, in a question, I'm not going to question.
There was new information, but this is the pushback that we're talking about. Um, in that meeting, you also stated Dave Pasquale said the city did not take responsibility for the sewer main from 150, 117, 119 West Main, that they paid to reroute to solve the freezing problem through Spring Grove. Correct?
Correct.
Again, this is not a question.
Yeah, we're gonna do public comment.
Okay.
Regarding this stuff, if you'd like to set up a meeting separately for this.
It seems like nobody wants to talk to me. So I talked to Dave Pasquale today. Dave said he could not remember any details other than the city paying for the reroute to solve the problem of the main freezing in the street. I mentioned to Dave I had a letter from Mike Springer documenting their agreement with the city's responsibility for maintaining the line and damage to Spring Grove property, and asked if he'd sign that letter. He said he'd rather handle it by a phone call. Um, I can call him, or, but anyways, he has no recollection of details. I have a letter here from Mike Springer documenting the details of their agreement between Dave Pasquale and the city. And then, you know, I said to Dave he couldn't remember details, I said, "I don't think Mike Springer is gonna allow you to run a sewer through his basement without taking some responsibility for it. He's not that stupid." Even though we're having trouble documenting that, um, it is the city's problem there. Dan Desjardins worked for the DPW for 33 years. Probably 20 of those years in Dan's position as DPW director. His letter, "In my 33 years of being employed by the city of Woll, it was always maintained that the sewer line running underneath Main Street from south to north between the bridges is the city's responsibility. There should be documentation of maintenance records such as Jenny the Frozen Main and MDOT blueprints showing the location," which I brought those to the last meeting, but that didn't seem to mean anything. And on his second statement here, he's a little confused on the timing, but, "At the time of the renovation rebuild of what is now the Main Street Inn," it was actually five years prior to that, "Dave Pasquale and Mike Springer agreed to reroute the sewer line to Spring Grove Variety Property to allow waste from the Main Street Inn to dispose on Riverside Drive. This change eliminated the freezing issue at the Main Street property." The city paid for it and accepted responsibility. When you have people that invest in your community, this is not how you treat them, denying them services. Past administrations solved problems, as did the city in the past, by rerouting it through Spring Grove, instead of walking and refusing, without any evidence, to support their position. We have some great employees at the DPW. We also have some bullies that want to make up their own rules. When pushed for documentation, they back down and say, "We'll fix that." They rewrite the ordinances and attempt to slip in crazy, unreasonable rules, like homeowners can't replace a dollar fitting in their water service, and instead require $5,000 water service. What if I had ventured that meeting to point that out? That's where we'd be. And as long as we're making friends, um, six months, I think probably nine months ago, Dan, in your office, we discussed a pile of hazardous waste on South Washington Street. And, um, then, three months ago, I'm thinking, but it was probably six, um, we discussed it in Mike's office. Have we addressed that at all?
We've got a meeting with some people about it tomorrow.
Correct. Good, I'm glad to see, because that's gonna be a problem like where road if we don't be with it. So you've got some documentation there about the city's responsibility. We're gonna put this back on the agenda, and do I need to come back with an attorney, or what are we gonna do?
This is not a question and answer, please wrap it up.
Okay, we're done.
Anybody else? All right, seven-year street plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a quick comment to make, and then I'm gonna let Dave Austin take over on this. Every year, uh, we look at the streets, Mike's our seven-year plan, and we try to review it every year to, uh, take out the streets that we've done and add in new ones in the seventh year, and then try to make sure it all works in our, uh, our financing abilities. So Dave's here to discuss that for you.
Thank you. Sue, could you please put that in there?
Thank you. You have this in your packets. This is a map, this is the map that we came up with after, first of all, going through all the Paser ratings, all the ratings of the streets, and then talking to DPW and administration staff about where we can distribute these improvements. So, uh, as it's shown here, it's kind of colored coded, my voice says in colored lines, so I apologize if I just, I call these the wrong number, but, starting out in 2022, we've got some projects this year on G Drive, uh, Fate, Roberta Jane, Heffron, in the southern part of the valley, this stuff. And then in 23 is the Monroe Project, the connecting streets. And then those of you who were around 15 or so years ago, we did a portion of Grindle. Uh, we actually improved Grindle from Jackson to Division, and then from James up to Grindle Court. The section in between Division and James was designed, but due to funding limitations, it was taken off the table. So it's gonna be resurfacing, uh, Grindle, the stuff that was done, and reconstructing that part that wasn't done in 23. And then in 24 is a resurfacing of, of Foreman Street, uh, which you get the federal aid money for that, uh, and also the reconstruction of Riverside. Then on the east side, of course, is the Washington, and all connecting streets, and then Jefferson. Uh, and then, uh, I'm going to just let the colors speak for themselves for the other three years. And the reason being is that while this is a seven-year plan, we hope that once this is in place, that the council revisits it on an annual basis. So these things are gonna change, so we can realistically pick the next three to four years, I think very tight, within your budget. Each year, you're gonna have to look at that fifth, sixth, and seventh year is going to change, uh, depending on financing. Uh, Sue, could you switch to the next page, please? So this just illustrates that, uh, in a bar chart format, point out a couple things. Uh, first of all, that in 23 and 24, the Monroe and Washington projects, of course, have the USDA funding, and, uh, everything else is through the Act 51 funds, or MDOT, local agency funds, or other funds through the DDA, or other funds that the city may have. But you can see there's quite a bit of work, uh, through 24, and you kind of ramp back down to 25, 26, 27. And then 28, which is out there's a way, uh, we've got some, uh, big projects, Boz Road, which was done, I think, on about four or five independent projects over the years to reconstruct, is now ready to, will now be ready to, uh, resurface at that time. What's not shown on this chart is behind the scenes on all of this is a, is a pretty proactive crack sealing budget. Uh, when we put the road down, at about three years after new paving, we want to start sealing those cracks. That will help prolong the life of the road, and will, uh, delay the need to do resurfacing. And Sue, on the last chart, the last chart just shows those numbers in a little different format. The black area represents the annual expenditures, and the green bars are the cumulative expenditures over that seven-year period. So approximately $8 million over seven years. So today, we just wanted to introduce you to the priority streets and the general magnitude of the work. Sue, if you go back to the map, please, to. And then, uh, if this is, uh, once we've got your questions, uh, addressed about the priority of streets, then we're gonna go back and finalize the text that goes into putting together the asset management plan, which is then adopted by, formally adopted by the city, and submitted to MDOT. Once MDOT approves that, you will then have permission to use major street portion of Act 51 on your local streets. May I allow you to do that once you have an asset management plan in place?
Any questions for Dave?
Yeah, and just so you know, um, I did do a, I presented to you last week too at the budget meeting, but I did do a, kind of a budget calculation. As Dave said, I'm pretty confident the next two to four years, five, six, and seven, there's too many variables out there that things could change, but if it trends the way it is right now, it looks, if we put the, the future year projects, we add inflation to those, to those, uh, costs as they would be today. Um, so, uh, I feel like, I feel very confident about it. Uh, I was very, I was conservative with projections revenue-wise coming into the city. I was a little, little loose on some of the general fund transfer stuff, because the marijuana money has been pretty lucrative, but I wasn't, I didn't go overboard with it. So I feel very, I feel very good, because there were a number of streets that they gave me, and I just looked at them, like, we got, I don't want to put something on paper that I'm not sure we can do. So, um, this is, there's been a lot of analysis done as to where I think it can be done.
Besides the street, Mike, is there anything that we need to be concerned about, sewer, or anything else below those, or are we looking at this?
So, your biggest sewer and water issue is gonna be, uh, Washington and Main, that's where we're having full replacement. Everywhere else is really spot repairs, so a lot of that stuff, we, if we're gonna do the streets, and if there's a spot repair, we can deal with it at that time, otherwise, uh, we don't have the major line replacements like we do for, where that would play a factor. And then, Dave.
Well, one thing, if you recall, we're, we're cleaning and looking at our sewer spill, and that information that we find in that, if there's something that comes to our attention, we would add this into their, into the program, and that may skew this a bit as well.
I'm just checking my memory. The reason Monroe is first is because we have a big infiltration of storm into the sanitary sewer. Is that, am I correct?
First ahead of who?
Washington.
Uh, well, I think, uh, Monroe, yeah, Monroe was looking primarily with utilities. Uh, I don't know, they're both in similar condition.
Okay.
Uh, so I don't know that there was, you really could have flipped those, I guess, um, but, um, Monroe's been selected for quite a while, so.
We moved Monroe, because at the time, that was the year we got the funding from the MDOT, so that's why Monroe was first.
Thank you, Mike, yeah, that, that was the reason.
And then we're still, um, to get the money from USDA yet this year.
Yeah, we should be able to close on everything.
Yeah, that, about the Monroe, yeah, the, uh,
From Monroe.
The loan portion, uh, the numbers have finally been approved, and that's underway right now, and then we're going through final approvals from USDA, so we're gonna get it bid as soon as we can, uh, you know, later this summer, early fall, um, be ready for next spring.
So our neighborhood's gonna be, uh, quite interesting coming on 24.
Yeah, it's gonna be, a lot of patients requested of the east side of the city for a couple of years.
Well worth.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the roads that we've done recently, when, I always like to drive down Amity, for instance, it's like, wow, this is, it's kind of nice.
Do you go the speed limit when you're going down?
Most definitely.
Yeah. So have we looked at this intersection right here to do something to try to stop the truck traffic from going down, or are we gonna put this road to a Class A road?
You're, you're talking about Monroe?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the, the road will be, is being designed, uh, for that level of this.
Yeah.
But the truck route is, uh,
Jefferson.
Jefferson, yeah. So, you know, we can, we're not using federal aid money on Monroe, so you can choose to allow or restrict heavy truck traffic on it.
And then, that would, the result would be a prosecution after we remove Monroe from the federal aid eligibility list to do that.
Right, but if you, yes, if you choose not to, so for instance, on G Drive, on Boz Road, uh, we are not allowed to, for heavy truck traffic, because of those federal aid connections.
Are you referring, I'm remembering discussion of making this a one-way from,
Yeah.
Yeah, is, is that dead in the water, or is it?
I don't think it's dead in the water, I think it'll, we'll have to readdress it when the, when the project's complete, because of all the different nuance, nuances that were put into place for this project. It's something that I do want to address, but there's a number of things that have to be done. I know, talking with Dave and Dave, we felt it was simpler just to get everything fixed and then address it.
Any other questions for Dave or Dan or Mike? All right, thanks. Windcraft lease, Mike?
In 2019, the city entered into a lease agreement with Windcraft Aviation to lease airport space to assist with, with this project of personalized aircrafts. At the time, we entered into a one-year lease with Windcraft for use of hangar three at the airport, and they were paying $1,000 a month. Due to COVID, we hadn't renewed the lease, but Windcraft continued to pay the $1,000 a month for the space. Airport manager Casey Brown's been working with Windcraft to renew the lease, where they would like to enter into a 10-year agreement for the same terms they had previously. The only modification to the lease, um, was some additional usage to hangar three, which is attached. I wish, Casey was supposed to be here tonight, um, I don't know where he is, for any questions, but I am recommending the full city council approved Resolution 1022 to approve the lease agreement with Windcraft Aviation. Yeah, Casey can explain it better than I can, but basically, just to continue doing what they were doing here for.
They were doing research and development, right?
They're doing research and development, basically, for like a personal aircraft, like a personal vehicle type thing.
And Casey's in favor of this?
Absolutely, yeah, he, yeah, he's fine with it.
I assumed that, but.
I did have a, a little concern about the overall value, um, as property continues to go up, and lease space continue to go up, uh, 10 years at the same amount seems, um, a little bit, I mean, it is $12,000 a year for, for that, but as, like I said, rent keeps going up.
I have no issue with that, I mean, if you wanted to do a CPI, if you wanted to add a CPI and flip down multiplier, I don't necessarily have an issue with that. If we wanted to tie it to the CPI, I don't have any issues with that, I mean, it was...
But how in demand is it, is the question? Because you can say, you know, property values are absolutely, but if he's the only guy willing to lease it to the point where Casey can give him more space in a different hangar, 12,000 is still 12,000 more than zero in an empty space. So I'm gonna trust that Casey knows what he's doing up there, he tends to do a pretty good job, so.
Uh, make the motion for Resolution 1022?
I'd support it.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salsedo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, uh, Gary Deutsel and Sandy Bartle, lease on North Washington.
I'm Gary Deutsel, 990 North Washington. Personal problems, it's not so much the money, but the markets. Everybody thought this be next place to be. The market is falling in this area, and it has gone up 30% last year, and, so that's my biggest problem. And, uh, being there 40-some years, I've got three sheds I'd like to empty and move. I have, I've got an upstairs and a downstairs, and I would like to be able to sort this property and sell some, and, uh, hopefully in August, an August sale is probably something I could plan on and do. We have plants, uh, perennials, a lot to save through this summer months here, a lot bladed, a couple of trees. I do have an invasive plant problem, it's a bamboo, I've been struggling to get rid of it. If I had a few more months, I can, I can get, probably get rid of it. It does, it's, it's a terrible thing, if it got across the street, it'd be a terrible I'd like to talk with somebody about it before we do move. I've got collections of rocks and metal, and, and the usual wood ring trash and scraps, and it's, uh, overwhelming and to do in two months. I'm asking, I, I'm gonna plan on the end of September, probably take me October to get some of this outside things done, so I'm asking, uh, to the end of October, if that's at all possible. I appreciate your considerations, and it's just, um, I've been here before, alive for I would appreciate your consideration.
I'm the one who asked that this come to, to our attention again. Um, one of the things that Mr. Dees brought up was that if the capability of having habitat come in, part of, to them, whatever's happened to the property, that they could come in and hopefully use some of the things that are in there and be able to recycle that part of it. I don't think that's unreasonable to, to give that particular thing. Time extension, I believe when you came here, you asked for sometime in early September to, to get out of that, I, I heard it was a couple of months.
Didn't ask at that time, I just said, um,
Even for that time extension on that part of it, um, which I, I don't, personally don't think is, is a terrible thing. Uh, you did also request that you would not be charged for that time, that, that I do not find reasonable, uh, if you're gonna be there, that, that you would still pay for, for those functions, so that's my take on it.
Um, it was the council direction two years ago that this was gonna be the final lease, and that we weren't in the residential landlord business, and we thought two years was a fair amount of time. I think it was a generous amount of time, I believe I had pushed for 12 to 18 months at the time.
I think, excuse me, I think if you review the amendments, there is no saying this is the last, this is our fifth lease here, you know, so what was I to expect? I, the council was different then, so what was I to expect? Excuse me.
I will agree with what you're saying, Mike, if you want to continue about that, there was gonna be a 24 months, uh, for the renewal of this, this next lease, it was that, we had a lot of conversations whether it be 12 months, 18 months, and, um, and we decided to go with 24.
Greg and I.
Some were in the records.
Went five, didn't we?
Yeah.
And we compromised.
Yep.
Uh, I think the only one that was on the board that actually, if we had other words, we'd say, yeah.
So the lease is up?
238.
So he's looking for a four-month extension.
I think I would, uh, probably favor had you started the process of eliminating stuff, then.
I have.
First wound up, and...
It's just, it's immense.
But two years is a long time to...
Like I say, this is our, this is, that was our fourth lease, perhaps, and, you know, every time, occasionally we fill the room with support. And I'm, I'm questioning, why wasn't this more public?
It was, every discussion happened in an open meeting, and absolutely was public.
Yeah, I mean, we're mad, you know, and, uh, it's overwhelming, and, uh, I'm here to ask for your support. I don't think four months is a, a breaking deal for you. I mean, the building comes down in a day, and, and the market is falling, it's really
Um, I'll interject. You're living your home, and a very, very long time, and so I think that I would be mad too. Um, I, I don't, that doesn't mean I disagree with the city's stance, I just also understand, I want to validate that your feelings are valid and that they're real.
Thank you.
Um, that you're human, and that, of course, you have lots of stuff, I have lots of stuff, and I put it in my house for two years, so, um, I just want to validate that I hear you, um, and I want to meet you on that compassionate level. Um, I am sort of siding with Jim, where I'd love to honor the Habitat for Humanity thing, um, it's an organization that I volunteered for in the past, and I think that they do a lot of good. Um, I'm not against extending the lease, um, I would say maybe beginning of October, like, end of September, 30th, um, I, I guess in my eyes, October brings cold weather, if it's not gonna happen, it probably hasn't happened, um, I suppose that's...
It won't be able to heat anyway, so...
Right, um, so that's sort of where I'm at, I, I'm, I am against, um, sort of letting you out of paying, um, I think that if your living's in worry.
I understand, it's just that you're paying for two places, but you have to...
And I do, I want to validate that's, that's...
That's life.
Yeah, that, I mean, it stinks, um, but, but that is life. Yeah, that, I mean, it stinks, but that is life.
Are we all throwing in our two cents here?
Yep.
Because of the length of time they've been there, I would support the end of September, but I would want it crystal clear. This is an open meeting, and if I'm gonna vote, that it ends at the end of September. That's when it ends. I don't want more discussion.
Yeah, my concern is that it turns into another fight because we were crystal clear two years ago, and we're here anyway. So, yeah. I think we're just at a point where we're making the next thing happen till the next thing happens. I'll entertain a motion if somebody would like to make one.
Jessica, is there anything we can do to get that so that it is expired on the 30th? Other than what we say here tonight, there's no add this or what does it put us in a compromising position by extending the deadline?
No, it doesn't as long as it's crystal clear on record, but that's what the motion has to be, your motion.
But the comment was made that you'd be paying for two places, right?
Hopefully.
I just don't understand why that's necessary. If there's somewhere to go, then that eliminates the whole argument of not having somewhere to go. I don't know, I just think we're gonna be in this a lot longer than September if this is the direction we decide to take, but... I mean, two years is, two years is a...
It wasn't clear two years ago.
Okay, it was, okay. I'll entertain a motion anybody wants to make, that was made clear at that meeting.
I make a motion that we allow them to remain paying whatever the current rent is until the end of the month of September.
September 30, 2022?
Yes. You'll be on that one.
I'll support.
Motion in a second. Sue?
Councilmember Salisburyville?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
No.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor Dohr?
No. Motion carries.
Just to be clear, we're gonna have to put that in writing. Okay.
Certainly, yeah. Thanks again for all your considerations. Plus, thank you.
Mike, 2022 Street Approve. Or sorry, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're to the point with our 2022 construction season that we're, we've taken bids and we're ready to get a contractor on board to do some work for us. We're looking at resurfacing Verda Jane Drive from Sidley to Faith, the entire length of Faith Drive, Heffron Street from down in the west, and the Valley Vista from Maine to Bose. Funding for this work will come out of the City Lowell Street Funds with the Valley Vista portion coming out of the VDA. The main portion of the work consists of removing all the existing worn-out pavement, repairing the gravel sub-bases failed and then paid back, paved the street back. There will be some drainage work that's necessarily, some curb repairs and some new curb along Heffron Street. Basically the same project that we did on Amity and Jane Ellen last year. Again, we over time put some bid specs together with the help of Williams and Works, posted them out to the construction clearinghouses, opened bids on April 26th. The city received six bids. They ranged from a low of $341,800 to a high of $409, almost $500,000. The engineer's estimate on the project was $461,000. The low bid is from Youngstrom Contracting out of Ionia for $335,344.50. Youngstrom Contracting has not done, has not previously performed construction work here in the city of Lowell, so I contacted the villagers, Saranac, talked to the public work supervisor there. Couple of years ago, just before COVID, they did a project over there similar to what we're doing. The public work supervisor said they did a very good job as far as, we have some construction goals. They paid attention to detail that he would never back again.
Six bids is a lot better than one, huh?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I drove over there in Saranac and I looked at the streets they did. They did a really good job that you can tell that they care.
And should, just a note too, with the pricing coming in as low as it is, Dan, Dave, and I are looking to see if maybe we can add a little bit more to this project, so...
And also not included on this is G Drive. That's on our list for this year too. Since that's being funded through the state, we have to jump through their hoops and do it their way. On Wednesday, we have a grade inspection meeting with them. Formally, they go through the plans and everything, make sure everything's up to their requirements, so... After that, they'll go through their bidding process and hopefully by fall, we'll get that out for bid.
There you go. Any other questions for Dan? Motion to approve the Youngstrom Contracting bid?
I will make that motion.
And I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor Dohr?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salisburyville?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. Mike, fireworks?
Yes, attached to our annual request from the Chamber of Commerce to hold our annual Riverwalk. Laurel's had fireworks in conjunction with the Riverwalk Festival on Saturday, July 9, 2022. Fireworks will be held at the same location, Stone Lake Side Park, and will begin shortly after 10:00 PM. Permitting, mapping, and necessary insurance forms have been provided. I'm recommending the local City Council approve the annual fireworks event in conjunction with the Riverwalk Festival for Saturday, July 9, 2022.
Any questions on that?
I did have a couple neighbors ask me because it is after the Fourth of July, and what is, will the police be out enforcing the no fireworks after the Fourth? Or do we consider this our Fourth of July holiday?
Oh, it's the day of the holiday, is the...
Under the ordinance though, the Riverwalk Festival is, they allowed to have fireworks till the 45th.
Yes, okay.
The citizens, right?
Yes, private fireworks, yes.
Somebody asked because there's dogs been tibeted in that apartment. I told them I believe they could do it that day, so I'll get back to them.
I make a motion we allow the chamber to blow things up.
I'll support.
Can you, never mind, let, leave it like that. All right, motion. Sue?
What?
Oh, discussion.
Ignite fireworks.
Sue, do like, I already said.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor Dohr?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyville?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Can I ask though, from when we're doing stuff like this? Because it actually looks like we just rubber stamp stuff when it comes across from this mic. So in the future, if the chamber wants to do this, a representative should be here.
I did suggest it.
Not just them, I mean, the airports are near either.
I do, I do ask them to come. Obviously, I can't control the coming out, but I do, I do, when it is agenda, I do have requests at some, yeah, I do request they come.
Thank you.
Well, now it's on YouTube and it's on cameras, and hopefully somebody will see it.
Not just the chamber. If you're bringing something to council, please show up, we'll link you. Speaking of showing up, Lowell Pride parking lot.
You got seats still, but hold on, I have to go.
No, we don't. Oh, yeah, we do, thanks, Michael.
I'm ready, if you want me out.
No, it's fine. We need to set a public hearing for the budget, schedule a public hearing for our next council meeting, which is May 16th.
2022, 7:00 PM, City Council meetings.
Any objections? Okay, consensus. Now, I took care of all that.
Thank you.
Hello. So I recently shared some statistics on social media that I thought might be of interest to all of you. 82% of trans individuals have considered suicide and additionally 40% have attempted it. Overall, LGBTQ youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. However, these statistics are not due to anything inherent in LGBTQ youth and instead are the result of minority stress experiences such as physical harm, discrimination, housing instability, and change attempts by parents. That last one, of course, referring to conversion therapy. Research is still pretty light, but what we have so far shows that 1/3 of LGBTQ youth experience parental acceptance. 1/3 receive outright parental rejection, which often brings with it those things such as housing instability, loss of healthcare and support. And the final 1/3 don't disclose their LGBTQ identity until they reach adulthood. You can hear those statistics and pretty easily pretend that this happens in other places, big cities, et cetera. However, you would be mistaken because they happen right here in Lowell, especially among our teens. You might hear those statistics and feel a sense of dread or hopelessness. With odds like that, what can one person do? Well, there's another statistic that I find even more astounding. All it takes is one adult affirming and accepting an LGBTQ youth to reduce their suicide risk by 40%. When it comes to affirming trans identity and pronouns, that risk has been seen to drop to the same levels as the general population, one adult. Similar research has shown that LGBTQ affirming spaces can reduce the suicide risk by 35%, one space. Are you that one adult, or do you have that one affirming space or home? Because let me tell you, our teens especially know if you are or if you do. I hear regularly about the bullying and hate that they receive at home, at school, and in our community in general, and it breaks my heart every time. So we're here today from Lowell Pride to ask you to close the parking lot at the boat ramp, just half of it, so people can still access the boat ramp, to help us create that one space here in Lowell to show the kids in our community that they are affirmed, they're accepted, and they are loved, as well as just have a great time. And I invite all of you to join us on June 4th on the Riverwalk. We'll be bringing back our panel discussion, among other things, which this year will focus on LGBTQ youth in particular. We'll have educators, medical professionals, therapists, parents, and community members answering questions posed both by LGBTQ youth and adults as well as members of our community in general. If you'd like to add a question to our panel discussion, we'd be happy to take that. But beyond that, I hope that you'll come and see and experience all that we have to be proud of as a community and to show our youth that they have a community that is willing to come out and learn and grow with them and show that they have more than just one adult and one space in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, is that gonna be enough room?
Yeah. Yes.
All right. Any other discussion or question?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Claire.
I think it was great last year. Julie and I are obviously open, so we were working, but we took turns going up and down the river just because it was such a happy, for lack of a better word, there was a great vibe on the river.
All right. Any other discussion or comments? All right, I will make a motion to approve the closure request for 216 North Monroe. I'll support discussion. Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor Dohr?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyville?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, last one, copier purchase.
Our current Canon C5250 copier was purchased in December 2012 from Applied Imaging, formerly Castle Print Clark, a preferred vendor of the city of Lowell. After a recent breakdown and repair of our current copier, the city reperformed this with only a temporary fix as parts are no longer available. The monthly expense of our current C250 copier is approximately $435.04 a month. The proposed IRA DX C5840I has a monthly lease rate of $182 a month. Our same monthly average of copies, the monthly maintenance expense on the new unit will be $239.50. The combined, the combined expense of our new unit comes out to $421.50. This will be $11.53 per month, less than the maintenance on our current copier. The new copier will have an increased scanning speed over our current copier of approximately 270 images per minute. The proposed lease in the agreement will include parts, labor, drums, and toner. I'm recommending that the local City Council accept the bid from Applied Imaging, a preferred vendor for a Canon DX C5840I copy machine, and authorize the mayor to enter into a five-year lease of $182 per month plus maintenance of $239.50. That was a typo by Sue. I can only tell you, and I'm sure Sue, you can tell you the same thing, our copier is in bad shape. We need a new copier.
What is the benefit to leasing over buying? Can we just buy one? Or you can't buy copiers like that? I'm asking, I can, I...
It was, we couldn't, it really, yeah, because we did look at, look at that, and it really, price-wise, it was washed over the same period of time. And once the lease expires, if we, if we need to, and it's a five-year lease, so this, we kept this a lot longer than we probably should have. We probably should have leased this a couple of years ago, but we limped it along, but it, we need a new one. And the price, when I looked at it, they really weren't much different.
Sue, do you need a new hammer too?
Then I'll make a motion to approve the lease of the new copier.
Support. Any other discussion?
Can we put that $11.53 into the street fund?
That's a month.
Well, I'm thinking.
We'll have hundreds of...
I would drive this thing in.
No, I think we should have a solid $141 as we move this place forward. Sue?
Mayor Dohr?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyville?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Order Commission report, please.
HDC didn't meet because we didn't have any money to give away. We're waiting to hear back from the community fund.
All right, Jim?
I have another question.
I have mine one, please.
Yes, mine are mixed as well.
Mine too. White City Managers report.
Not much to report, other than I'm working on a number of economic development projects that will probably eventually come to you very shortly. That's all I have.
Maybe you don't want to say in an open meeting, but word on the street is another ice cream shop, is that accurate?
I'm not aware of that.
All right. Appointment is empty for the year. Yeah, that would be perfect. Uh, council comments, Leah? Marty?
Nope, I'm good.
Jim?
Same here, good.
Claire? I got one. Go ahead.
I gotta give a shout out to our son, James Boland.
Doctor.
Soon to be Dr. James Boland. Some of you might know him from his work with the fire department. Other people who live around him might know him as the nice guy that plows their sidewalks in the winter. Anyway, it's been a long struggle for James and Jessica and their son Hunter. And Thursday, he gets his white coat from MSU. We're pretty excited, and he'll be an ER doc. He'll be doing his residency as an ER doc at Metro.
At University of Michigan West. Yeah.
Yeah, figured that one out.
Pays, money's good.
And it's, I obviously have known James and Jessica for a long time. They both have chosen healthcare and community service and community betterment as a career, so it's cool to see steps taken forward, and, you know, they're setting a really good example for Hunter, so... Congratulations to them.
Yeah.
Good?
I made it through without crying. Woo-hoo!
Keep going.
I'm done.
Uh, I only have one small comment referencing somebody here. Saturday afternoon, Marty and Lori Chambers put on alignment appreciation dinner and rat-falled at New Union Brewery, and it was well-attended. Everybody there had a great time despite a little bit of rain.